Supervisors. All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. This meeting is being recorded on CNET's YouTube channel. Public comments, this is for any items that are on or off the agenda that somebody wants to speak about before we go into regular order.
I have to start.
This is Lenora Foster, who's over at the EMS meeting now, asked me to read this to the members and the board. Center gives is winding down, and we would like to thank all of the citizens of Half Moon Township who generously donated on behalf of the Port Matilda EMS. With your help, it looks like we will reach all our goals. Thanks so much for making our first time with Center Gives so successful, the volunteers and staff of the Port Matilda EMS. So, I don't know how much they made so far, and you can continue to donate until eight o'clock tonight, so if you want to click while we're here in the meeting, please feel free.
Keep on giving.
And this is for me. I was at the Upper Bald Eagle COG meeting a week ago Tuesday, and again, I had the, heard the Port Matilda Fire Company talking about all of the things that they still need to purchase for this new fire truck and for equipment, and again, I don't know what all those things are, but I do know that we have here in Half Moon Township in the, excuse me, I'm not feeling terrific, but in the fire protection fund, fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents. And I also know that December eighth of 2022, this board approved twenty-five thousand dollars to be distributed between the Warriors Mark and the Port Matilda Fire Company, and as of this date, none of that money has been distributed. I don't understand why this board is not giving them the money that they need. They, the, these, the people in the fire department are volunteering their time, and on top of that, when they got this new fire truck, there were all kinds of modifications that needed to be made to that equipment, and they volunteered their time to do a lot of those modifications. They not only volunteer their time to go out and save your property, save your lives, they, they spend hours and hours, I think it's two-hundred-and-eighty hours, that they have to actually train for volunteers, and again, the, the board seems to not want to give them any money, and, and all of this money is dedicated to the fire company. So why is it not being distributed? That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Squire, I think you were next.
So, I'm Virginia Squire, and I live on Loveville Road, and I'm actually reading something also from Lenora Foster. She says, "May seventeenth starts National EMS Week, and we are lucky to have a dedicated and talented, talented staff of EMTs so close to where we live. We should recognize their service, not just this week, but all year long. The public can support the Port Matilda EMS during fundraisers like the upcoming soup and sandwich sale, and by purchasing annual memberships, and by volunteering. So you can also show your support by helping to ensure their service can continue with sustainable funding." So, thank you, Lenora Galucci Foster, by me. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Just have a quick one from Clearwater Conservancy, the cleanup day. We ended up collecting over twenty-five bags of trash between five, all five-fifty between the cemetery to Way Fruit Farm, and then we also cleaned up Smith Road and Autumn, Autumn Park. So, anyway, just wanted you to, to thank everybody for supporting that, and it was good to have people there cleaning up, and hopefully next year we can get a little support from PennDOT to put a little safety signs up, but anyway, thank you so much.
All right, thank you for doing that. Anyone else?
Can I come back up as me? Now I'm not Lenora, now I'm just me. I don't know if all of you might have received an invitation to a diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging workshop that's going to be held in the COG building Tuesday night from five-thirty to seven-thirty. Lori McGary and I will be facilitating the meeting, and representatives from all of the townships have been invited. We had to postpone it, it was originally last fall, and we had to postpone it because of illness in the family, but I would really like to encourage all of you to attend. Half Moon Township has one person attending, that's Patty Hartle, and attendance at this meeting could conceivably help grant applications, if you're thinking about applying for any grants. They will ask on grant applications, what are you doing to ensure diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, and you could say, "I attended this two-hour meeting." Light dinner refreshments will be served, and you all got an email inviting you to the meeting, so I hope to see some of you there. I will be co-facilitator.
I have something secret quick, if that's okay.
Yep, sure. This is the time to do it, so.
Okay, yeah. I'm here, because I'm hearing, as a representative of the library, a few different concerns about the, the structure of the meeting with the reports, you know, that we write out now and submit. My concern is that they are not easy, like, they're not printed out, laid out with the agenda, and my concern is that not everybody in the township has access to a computer, Wi-Fi, a printer, a cellphone, that you can see that kind of information. So my, my concern is that the reports, like, from CNET, the library, I'm not, is it EMT, I think, too, they're not easily accessible, and so that is my only concern. I would just ask that, as long as the agenda's, and, and, you know, they're not a lot, and that as long as the agenda's being printed out, that maybe we could have some copies of the report printed out, too, so people can just grab them on their way in and can read them, because I think it's a, you know, yeah, you know, it's, it's, it's a position of privilege to assume that everybody has access to this electronic availability, and just, a lot of people just can't afford it. So that's, and I know money has been a big issue with what individuals can afford in the township, so that is just all I have to say.
Excuse me, can I just say, too, I did print out my report and bring it and lay it up there if anybody wants to read it.
My report is also, I have some in my hand if anybody wants them.
Thank you. Anyone else that's not on the agenda? Okay. All right, we'll close public comments now, move on to the approval of the minutes from April thirteenth, 2022. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, do I hear a second? Moved in second, and any discussion by the board? Hearing none, call for the question. All those in favor of the minutes of April thirteenth, 2022, approvals signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it's approved. Consent agenda. This would be the ratification of the bills of oh-four-oh-eight, 2023, to four-twenty-one, 2023, general fund, one-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, nine-seventy-seven, fifty, open space preservation fund, the amount of fifty dollars, capital reserve fund, the amount of five-thousand, nine-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and eighteen cents. So, and approval of the bills for the period of oh-four, twenty-two, twenty-three, to oh-five, oh-five, 2023, and the following funds, general fund in the amount of sixty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars and eighty-five cents, open space preservation fund in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and forty cents. To recognize May twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, it's National EMS Week for 2023, and permission to transfer sixteen thousand from the general fund to the park and rec fund. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Do I hear a second? Moved in second, and any discussion by the board? Call for the questions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Next up, we have the Pennsylvania Game Commission. We've got two Pennsylvania Game Commission guys. If you guys want to take a seat here with a microphone.
You want to stand up?
All right, as long as CNET can hear you. Okay.
I'm Officer Higgins, also Schaefer, we were asked here today to throw some topics relating to state game lands in Half Moon Township, and just fair nuisance issues, and the new chronic wasting disease, and disease management areas, so I'm Officer Schaefer.
Sure. I see a lot of neighbors here on the deputy game warding up the road. Half Moon Township hosts, one of our local crown jewels is the, the state game lands, one-seventy-six, is Scotia game lands. Game lands themselves have really just two purposes, they're intended first to be wildlife habitat, and then second for, for public hunting, so any other uses of them and so forth, you know, are, are, are extra. The, something that, that, you know, might work for, for township newsletters and so forth, is maybe publishing like the Act of Hunting Seasons, that might be helpful. Some people often are asked, like, hey, what's in season? So that, and then, and by the way, Ron Sorvello, thanks for inviting us here, and you and I can communicate on, on any of that, and I can give you, you know, the direct sources for that. Also, something that'll be helpful, and once again, it'll be in the publications we give you, but the game commission, locally, the game commission has a new phone number, actually two new phone numbers, we'll give that to you, but it's eight-eight-three PGC Hunt, or eight-eight-three BGC Wild, and once again, I'll send you that, so you can publish that. It's a good idea, since all of us live in an area where there's lots of wildlife, and there are wildlife issues plenty of, plenty of the time, game commission should be your, your first call and your first stop, so whether it's an injured deer in the road, or a sick raccoon in your yard, or a hunting issue, like, you know, somebody hunting out of season or doing something dangerous, it's a good idea for everybody around here to have a game commission phone number on their phone, so that if you seize one, you can report it right away, and that's, that's been helpful lately. The, as far as bears, by the way, all of these, these topics here, we brought a bunch of pre-published, very informative handouts, and Ron, you see, put those out?
I put them right on the table over there for anybody to take that wants them.
Thank you, there's a pile of them, and there are, you know, game lands and about-it maps and so forth, to know where things are. Bears, as, you know, we're in that season right now, they've come out of hibernation, they're hungry, they're, they're wandering around the wildlife habitat, use where they are supposed to live, they'll come out of that habitat into your neighborhood if, if what you had at home smells good. So there are, the most common enticing's are going to be bird feeders, which this time of year, probably the birds don't need, you know, additional feeders, for example, observe within the trees and so forth, that, that's always better, especially if you see things like bears coming in, or if your neighbors are having to come in. Things like barbecue grills, you know, just take the time out to make sure it's cleaned off, or a bear can actually come in and not get over and chew on things. That'll just keep the neighborhood a lot happier and safer. There are several publications on that, you know, why is there a bear in my yard, let the black bears around, and there were, you know, some people harvested bears this, this year on this game land in excess of five-hundred pounds, there are big bears here, and we've had like mama bear, you know, and one of the problems is if they start coming into the neighborhoods and become habituated, they're not great people like they're supposed to be, and then, you know, they're just strolling around the neighborhood, you know, trying to steal your Wi-Fi, so you're probably not bad. So there are other attractors and so forth, but bear, once a bear hits that, they, they end up, you know, even if we relocate them, sometimes they just continue to problem.
Yeah, a big thing to do, I mean, as soon as you notice you have a bear in your house around your area, is as soon as possible, you want to remove any food source, so if they're getting your trash, possibly you want to try to keep that trash indoors for a couple of weeks, store it there, you can take it out the morning of garbage day, because that, that bear's looking for food, as long as there's any type of food source, it's going to keep coming back, and if you have neighbors, you know, you have a bear, and you're doing all that, and it's still coming back, talk to your neighbors, let them do the same things well, because that's going to make, let that bear come to your property as quick as way possible.
And then, third topic here, CWD, chronic wasting disease, it's a, a disease that affects the central nervous system of all servants, so around here, that's our deer. It, when it attacks your central nervous system, it causes the, the actual tissue of the nervous system to break down, and then, you know, one of the, one of the symptoms is that will waste away, become gone, but you can't always tell by looking at them, you know, which ones are positive or not. We are in a disease management area here, all of Half Moon Township is in a DMA. Now, that does not mean that we have found CWD here, it means we have found a, there has been a positive case within ten miles, is what that means. Some of the restrictions that happen when you're in a DMA, one, if you hunt, or if you ever, you know, accept venison from like a crop killed deer, or road killed deer, or anything like that, the high-risk parts, which would be the brain, spine, spleen, the tonsils, those cannot be removed from the DMA, so if you're gonna, if you're gonna process it, the high-risk parts need to stay here. Once again, there are publications there that will tell you who processors are, who are, you know, within legal area, to take a deer there and get it processed if you, you know, if you want to meat. And actually, something that's new this year, people have asked for this for years, a deer that's been hit or something like that, you can, you know, you can claim it, take it home, you have twenty-four hours to call in, you get a permit to keep the edible parts, doesn't cost anything, you don't need a license or a permit for that. For the first time, you can actually also get a permit for non-human consumption, so people who like throw raw feed for their animals and things like that, they're, you know, you can read about that online, but if there's a deer hitting, you don't, you won't eat it, but, you know, your, your pets will livestock, too, there's now a way to do that.
And for anybody who does hunt, and they do successfully harvest a deer, locate that state game lands, one-seventy-six, along Scotia Range Road, we all have bins, if anybody goes out there, you might have seen before, there are CWD testing bins, so you'll just take the head of your, the deer that you shot, you throw them in there, and they'll actually test the deer free of charge, and whether, let you know if it has CWD or not, so.
Question about that.
Yep.
Do you leave the air tag in?
Yes, I leave the tag, everything in.
Yes, and, and that does count that for being a tagged deer, then?
Right.
We'll be able to, yeah, that's a great question, yeah. And that also includes none, so there are tags there, so if you do receive a deer that was crop killed, or, or road killed, or something like that, there are tags there to tag all that, so that way, if you process the meat, you want to, might want to hold on to it to get your test results, a lot of people choose to do that. Then nothing is, is, there is a complete feeding ban in any DNA, so although it's been a lot of fun, and people like to, you know, throw feed out, you know, and, and, you know, leftover apples from ways, or corn, or anything like that, at this point, it is unlawful to feed deer in a disease management area, because we found that, you know, part of the epidemiology is that when they come in for non, non-living food, in other words, not just, just either grazing or browsing, when they come in for feed, it does tend to spread disease much more quickly. So for that reason, it's unlawful. A lot of people might not know that, and think it's okay, and, you know, oh, yeah, we, you know, the deer and the bears come in and eat our bird seed, if that's happening, then the, any of that feeding needs to stop, and if you know somebody who's unaware of that, you're welcome to either have them call us, or you can call us, and we'll, you know, we'll help them to be able to be in compliance of civil law and wildlife. Is she in?
Is that like accidental feeding? Like, if I have chickens, and like they're, I throw some scratch out or something outside of the run, and then I see deer in the morning or evening eating that, is that like unlawful?
Yeah, if they're coming, if they're gathering, if you have like one here and there, you know, let's cue, take a picture with the chickens. But if, if it's, if the deer are starting to come in and congregate and multiples of them, it would be a good idea like change that practice at least long enough that they are discouraged from coming to eat. Yeah, thanks for, for bringing that up.
Yeah. So, regulations state specify that it's unlawful to directly or indirectly feed deer. So, if you're doing some type of other lawful food source and putting it out there and you know that deer are coming in and congregating there and feeding, so we can come in and say, hey, you need to stop that action because it's causing deer to congregate. And, you know, you might have you put your feed somewhere, you know, more controlled where only the chickens will get to it if need be. So. Yep.
Am I correct in thinking that CWD is transmissible to humans?
It is not.
It is not.
There are other spongeiform encephalitis. So, in sheep, it was scrawny.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, enough of us are old enough to remember that big scare in Scotland was going to lose all their sheep. And then, mad cow.
Yeah.
You know, he came for the one that was a bovine form and, and that had everybody scared. I think that was with the eighties that happened. And then, was it Creutzfeldt-Jacob syndrome?
Yep.
Is the version of that that's in humans. Now, that said, they are also very similar. They're prion diseases.
And they can mutate.
And, you know, that, that, a lot of people I've spoken with, they could say that it's, a lot of that's at this point difficult to understand. I mean, they probably even speak more to that, but I've, I've heard that it's, that the prion diseases are complicated and.
Right. We're still trying to understand. But the bovine one did seem to cause some disease in people. But the deer one is, not that I know of, has ever been proven to be passable to people. Still not a good idea to eat the brain or spine on.
I understand that the disease is a, if I'm, unless I'm mistaken, it's a form of protein. It's a form of a protein. You can't cook it out of the meat. You can't kill it by cooking the meat.
Right. Yeah. It's a misformed protein, as I put a prion is. And once again, the guy's actually.
It's transmissible, which is the odd thing about it. Like a piece of DNA of a virus, the protein can actually get transmitted, which is unlike most other diseases. So, that's why it's still trying to figure out how to start and stop.
Right.
Yes. Yeah. And another thing about deer that we've found out in recent years is that although deer do not get COVID, they do indeed, I mean, they do not, they not get the disease. They do indeed carry SARS-CoV-2 virus, and it can rapidly mutate in service. So, we're ready for that too. But, so that's another reason not to be around, you know, still living deer and breathing around them. And we take precautions when we handle service. Now, all those things that, you know, that said, taking proper precautions and, and, you know, the, the meat muscle parts of the animals can safely be, you know, can be removed. But at this point, if a deer tests positive for CWD, because we don't actually know, most people prefer than not to eat it and it's just a spread of stuff.
Okay.
Just another thing with the, with these management areas, they are constantly expanding every year. So, we stand out, but even on our website, you can go on and actually look, we have interactive map that updates constantly that shows what the current disease management areas are. So, if you're someone who hunts more, you know, over the, the state, you might have a camp somewhere, it's always good to check those maps because, like we said, it is unlawful to take any deer from disease management area out, especially those high-risk parts. So, there's ways where you can lawfully do it if you remove all high-risk parts, which they said the pamphlets here label what the olives are. So, like you said, if you are someone who travels during hunting seasons, it's best to check on that map. It'll also give you all the, the processors and taxidermists that you're lawfully allowed to take from your DMA to those areas too. So, that's something to keep checking on during the hunting seasons.
You know, for, for a lot of, a lot of neighbors, if you have people who come to visit you from out of town during hunting season and hunt here and want to take their deer home, that would be important to know that. And they, they may bone it out themselves and, you know, and, and process it themselves as long as the high-risk parts don't leave the DMA. But they can take meat home. And that, and then when the head is tagged and put in the bin, then everything is lawful. If they harvest a trophy animal, want to take that, there are protocols for having to do that with a, a taxidermist or processor who is, you know, local. So, that's, that's the only thing that's at all inconvenient for some people. And there are, I, I didn't realize that, but this, this little sixty-five-hundred-acre game land is also hosts trophy deer. Just, just monsters. I didn't know that until I saw a bunch of them. So. Any other questions for us?
I got a question about access to the game lands. There are numerous access points that when subdivisions were done in the past, were put into the game lands. Are you guys satisfied with those? Do you feel like we have enough? Do you, is there any kind of improvements that need to be done or anything you recommend?
I mean, I haven't heard anything as far as not having enough access or anything like that. So, as far as I'm aware.
No, that's, I, actually, I would love to turn that back around. If anyone else has concerns about too much not enough access or a place that it should be, that would be a great thing, you know, to, to get back to us with since it's part of our community. I've noticed that Donna Hughes was nice enough that, you know, they've, they've left part of their property up at the end of, I think, is that, is that Buckhorn? Yeah. I mean, it looks like a, an actual game land parking lot and it's just their private property. They allow people to, to park there to hunt. So, that's kind of nice. But yeah, that's a good point, you know. And if anybody ever sees violations, I've, I've noticed that people around here seem to have pride in, in, in game lands. So, I, that's, I think that Ron was why you invited us to, you know, to come in. If you see something like, you know, there was, that encament was, was reported, unfortunately, it took quite a while because of a lot of changing of staff, but there was actually an active crime scene for a while. It was all processed and it's been cleaned up. And thanks to people telling us things that are out there, it's much easier to, you know, to keep it all spiffed up.
Yeah. Actually, this year, we started, Roy helped to get it all set up, but we're going through game lands, one-seventy-six, cleaning up a lot of the garbage piles that are out there through him locating them, a lot of abandoned tree stands, different things like that. So, hopefully, this will help clean up a lot of those, you know, unsightly piles and garbage that people left out there. So.
Tree stands was being, yeah, sorry.
So, anytime you guys see anything like that, you know, report it and we'll try to get it removed as timely as we can. So, we appreciate those like of information.
Tree stands are a big complaint from, from hunters, and we have, at this point, identified, located, and mostly removed more than fifty. And that's, hopefully, is at least half of them. But that's one of those things, if you see them, snap a picture, GPS, and then through whatever channel, get it to us. Ron can always get ahold of me. And, you know, just keep the game lands the way it's supposed to be.
So, Hunter, Hunter needs to take his tree stand every time he leaves the game lands?
Oh, thanks for asking. Anything that's left overnight, so like a blind or a tree stand, first of all, may only be put up, you know, no sooner than two weeks before the very first day of the first deer season and must be gone by two weeks after the last day of the last year's season. And anything that is up must be labeled very conspicuously with an indelible label that has either their hunting license number on it or an equipment number. So, anything that doesn't meet those, those, and it cannot be retrieved. So, anything that doesn't meet that is a violation. And, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll visit those sometimes during hunting season and we'll get that corrected. But yeah, thanks for that. Yeah. Because some people leave them up, and I've had several people say like, oh, I wanted to take my granddaughter hunting for her first hunt, and every place we go, there's already a tree stand, and we can't tell if that's somebody's or not. And there were, when we, when we really started to look into it, I wore out a few pairs of boots, you know, walking around, and sure enough, there were way too many. And some of them you can tell were there for a while.
And we do do different types of habitat management throughout on the game land. So, this time of year, we're doing controlled burns on state game lands. So, I'm sure if you have a tree stand out there, if you don't want out there when we're doing a burn one day, end up getting caught on fire. So, that's another reason why it's good to, you know, know where your stand is and remove it during those time periods.
When is the last day of the last hunting season? There are so many of them. It seems like hunting season goes almost all year.
Well, to some extent, there's something huntable every single day, but.
Yeah.
The major big game seasons, and that'll be, that's, you know what, I'll, I'll send you a, a link to a calendar, and I think there's even a Google Calendar link. So, if you want to like, like an iCal link also that you could throw it on your calendar. But the, the bear season's very short, and at this point, they're within rifle bear season mostly.
Yeah.
And then deer seasons, there's an early archery season that begins in October, and then there's some kind of deer season the whole way until, into January.
Yeah. So.
Late January.
Yeah. The tree stand basically starts two weeks prior to like deer archery season and goes into the late deer season. So, typically from around October to like January, September to then. So, like right now, people shouldn't have stands out because they shouldn't be using them out anymore. Turkey season's in, but I don't know too many people who want a turkey of a tree stand. So.
Turkey season's pretty much the month of May.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe, you know, by a date or two in, in either direction, but it's pretty much the month of May for spring.
This time of hunting season, are there any restrictions for horseback riding on game lands?
Yes. Great question. By, by definition of by law, there actually should be no bicycle or horseback riding at all, other than while lawfully hunting in traffic. And that said, the game commission did, they, they wanted to add opportunities for people to see the game land without having to walk the whole way in. So, there are lawful riding trails, but the riding trails are our restrictions on. So, for instance, during all of the rifle seasons, no, no riding for safety.
Except Sundays?
What's that?
Is there Sundays or?
It used, used to be for except Sundays, but now that there's Sunday hunting, they, they took away that part of it just to keep people safe. Yes. And now, right now, during spring turkey, from morning until one PM during the, the whole month, no riding, you know, until one PM except Sundays.
Yeah. So, one of the handouts we have here is just different designated routes for horseback and bike riding. So, those routes are going to be saying, if it's a bike riding route, it's a horseback running route, and they are marked here. So, unless you see a green sign that has a horse and the bike on it, then it's not designated route. Because the only routes we have are marked as a route. So, anything off that route, you're not allowed lawfully to be riding a bike or a horseback on that.
You can lawfully ride the whole way from tow hill to Green Brack with a couple of beautiful loops in between. So, there, there's plenty of access there. Yeah. But there are other places. It does, to have a lot of, a, a lot of, you know, bicycle and horse traffic actually defeats the purpose of wildlife habitat. So, they very carefully mapped that areas that the biologists determined would cause some heat and hot. And that's why. Thank you. Thanks, law folks. We have to go rescue. Thank you for talking.
All right. Next up, chapter one-eighty-one Sewer and Sewer Disposal Ordinance Action.
I think everybody's probably taken a look at the one-eighty-one information. Mark, do you want to give, give the public a rundown?
Yeah, absolutely. So, over the last couple of months, staff has been working on doing a comprehensive review and update of your subdivision and land development ordinances. And one of the ordinances that we got around to first in addressing is your sewers and sewage disposal chapter, which basically addresses how onlot septic systems are allowed to be established here in the township. Back in two thousand and thirteen, the six center region municipalities entered into a, into an agreement on how they would allow for development to occur outside of the public sewer service area in terms of requiring community onlot disposal systems for any development with fifteen or more dwelling units. And a community onlot disposal system is one that uses soil for remediation where multiple homes or a large business or something would flow into that one system. So, what we have proposed in, in chapter one-eighty-one are amendments that would make your ordinance consistent with that agreement that was adopted back in two thousand and thirteen. For the most part, we added a couple definitions that are from the agreement, as well as a section identifying that any development with fifteen or more lots or dwelling units would be required to have a community onlot system. We're also proposing two minor amendments to your zoning ordinance as well. In particular, your A-one agricultural district and your R-one single-family residential district. Both of those districts list as a conditional use community sewage treatment plants. Those are potentially systems that would be in violation of that agreement. So, we just have those two types of treatment plants struck out to be removed from your ordinance. And that's a summary of what is in this amendment. What we're recommending is that the, I should mention, your planning commission did look at it last month and recommended approval of these changes. What we're recommending is that the board schedule a public hearing for your first meeting in June. Between now and then, I will make sure this is seen by the center regional planning commission in accordance with the municipality's planning code so they can take and review it and provide any comments back to the township before you would take action. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Can you go over the one-eighty-one, five-B about the fifteen lots, how that affects the township?
Yeah. So, what would happen is if someone were to come in and propose a residential development that has fifteen or more lots, or would generate fifteen or more equivalent dwelling units if, if they were to propose some type of a development that didn't have individual lots but had fifteen homes on it, they're required to serve wastewater from that development utilizing a community onlot disposal system. So, it just requires them to do additional sewage planning and have a centralized system that would be properly maintained to serve that development. If it's anything less than fifteen lots or, or dwelling units, they could do it with individual onlot systems. So, the, the main benefit to this is that it's going to ensure that any large developments come in are properly planned for and that the soils that are there are capable of supporting that level of development.
All right. I guess the question I had is sort of on the wording on that. It says, "Service area that proposes fifteen or more lots or will generate fifteen or more equivalent dwelling units of wastewater per day, and where any individual lot or unit, in the case of a condominium, is less than two acres in size, shall be required to utilize colds as defined this ordinance to treat and dispose of wastewater." Are we catching that properly with the, the two acres in size? I mean, is it two acres per unit? Should there, should there be something in there about two acres per unit?
That, that is the wording that came out of the agreement. I think, are you, are you, it sounds like maybe you're talking about overall density.
Well, that's what my concern is.
Sure.
That, that if we end up with, you know, fifteen units on a two-acre lot, I mean, you know, and they do a cold system, I, I, I gotta tell you, I'm not in favor of community onlot disposal, period.
Sure.
Because I think it, like I said, they always fail, so it's going to come back and bite us in the tail.
Sure.
And so whatever we can do to make it as difficult as possible to proceed with that, or make it something that nobody wants to do because it's not cost-effective on the court.
Well, I can certainly go back and make some tweaks to that to clarify that if the density, you know, would result in, I guess, more than, right now, you don't have anywhere you allow density greater than one dwelling unit to the acre. So overall, if someone were to come in and try to propose some type of a condominium development, they'd still have to meet those requirements of your ordinance. So conceivably, it would have to be at least 15, you know, acres for 15 units. But I can try to amend that to make it a little more clear for overall density. I know with your ordinance that was established, I think, back in 2005 or 2006 when this was first adopted, it does require that any community on-lot disposal system in the township has to have an outside permittee that was identified as the UAJA. That's something that's been in existence in your ordinance for a long time. So I think the intention behind that was the hope that a public sewer, you know, agency would ensure that those systems are running properly and hopefully not fail, as you pointed out, is sometimes the case with these.
Anybody else on the board? Questions, comments, concerns?
What can you add from us tonight?
I think we were looking for a motion to advertise for a public hearing for your first meeting in June to consider adoption of the ordinance. Obviously, it sounds like I need to make some minor tweaks to the language.
Well, I think you could probably just make them if the board agrees to send it forward.
Why would make that motion that we advertise for a public hearing? And when will we have that public hearing?
It's your June 8th meeting?
For the June 8th, 2023 Board Supervisors Meeting.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Moving second. Any discussion by the board? Comments, concerns? All right, the motion to advertise. Call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Imposed? Eyes have it.
May I ask a question?
You may.
I've been following this, the cold system debate, for a long time. The property near Gray Cemetery, you said the soils can support a cold system. Can that soil there support a cold system, or is that too perhaps direct a question to ask? I don't know.
I honestly am not sure that they've ever done testing up there to establish a community on-lot disposal system. If you're referring to a plan that was recently reviewed by the board, that was not a community on-lot disposal system. That was a community sewage treatment plant that had a different form of treatment that didn't use soil.
Previous to that plan, that individual had maybe five or six years ago or longer proposed a cold system, and that led to a tour of the Mifflin County Cold System because they have one there. And I remember people went to that system to inspect it. So I'm going back maybe 10 years, but I know that that individual has proposed a cold system at some point. And I'm just wondering where we are.
I don't think that the soils would support, on a majority of that property, the soils probably would not support that particular use. Community on-lot implies that maybe eight houses or 10 houses are all plumbed into the same septic system. So if one person misbehaves terribly, they could ruin it for all the neighbors. That's why I don't favor those kind of things. If you blow your own septic system apart, it's on you. If you blow your neighbor's septic system apart, then it's still on you, but it creates a lot of problems for everybody else involved.
But the ordinance sets conditions on the use of a cold system.
It does. A lot of these, a lot of these things are not necessarily in our control. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania through the sewage planning process determines what we are allowed to do and what we aren't allowed to do. We just try to put parameters in place that protect the township as much as possible, which is what we're looking at doing here with these revisions. You know, it's like mining. We have no authority over mining in Pennsylvania. So even if we wanted to, you know, we could adopt all the ordinances we want, but they don't have any teeth. So, and it'd probably get shot down immediately since it went before the judge. So all we can do is put parameters on things to sort of limit certain uses and certain things that happen.
I'd just like to point out something with regard to ordinances in general, and that we need to make sure our ordinances are enforceable.
But we don't have an enforceable, we don't have an agent.
Well, the court system will handle that.
We do have a process for enforcement. We just don't have the same process that a city would have or a borough would have necessarily. But there is an enforcement vehicle mechanism for ordinances. But they have to be enforceable first.
Yeah, through the Court of Common, please. And upwards of there. All right, so we're looking at the meeting in June. Go ahead, and Mark, I'll trust that you can come up with something.
I'll make some.
I'm sure that'll meet our requirements.
Yep, absolutely.
Anything else on this? Open Space Lease Plan CPI Increase Action. Amy, do you want to give us the rundown or adjustment for this year, if you have that handy?
Well, excuse me. So it's an increase of 6.65%. So the new rate would be 40.74%. Last year's rate was 38.20. So it's a pretty big increase.
Do I hear a motion to approve the lease rate as required by our ordinance?
No, I would like.
Do I hear a second? Moving second. Any discussion by the board?
I do have discussion. One of the things that concerns me about the adjustment to CPI is that it's not a floating adjustment. Other words, it goes up, but it can't go down. Let's say the inflation goes down, there's nothing to adjust it down. It goes up and keeps going up. So it doesn't float.
Right.
So I'm a little bit concerned about that. I think we should, in the future, look at that as part of the overall plan, but that's all I wanted to say.
Anybody else? Call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Question approved. It's be Resolution 2023-13 Defined Benefit Pension Plan Freeze Action. Brett, are you gonna?
Yep. So in 2021, well, in late 2020, we established a new defined contribution plan for new hires, where anyone after January 1st, 2021, would belong to the defined contribution plan while all older employees belong to the defined benefit. When that happened unbeknownst to staff at the time, there needed to be a resolution freezing the defined benefit plan. That was brought to our attention by the new pension administrator at PSATS, who just asked us to make this resolution and backdate it, and all would be well with the world. So that's what we're handling tonight.
And we have to take.
Correct.
To make everything right.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm going to wait for Ms. Hurdle to return. We have a full board.
So that happened.
It was enacted January of 2021. The change to a defined.
The new plan was correct. That's where the hire date was.
Defined contribution plan.
Right, it was enacted. I honestly am unsure of the date in 2020 at this time. But it happened around then for new hires of January 1st, 2021.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion to pass the Resolution 2023-13 for the Defined Benefit Plan?
I move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion by the board? Call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Resolution passed. Next up, Resolution 2023-14 Fleet Replacement Policy Action. And I had a copy of this here somewhere, but Chuck, do you want to just let the public know a little bit about that?
I can. I'll let Brett correct me if I'm wrong. He has spent a lot more time on this plan.
Okay, well, maybe I ought to flip it over to him.
So, but, so the idea behind the plan is we're trying to, we're trying to enact a policy to where all of our fleet of trucks and equipment are replaced in such a manner that they're less breakdowns, more cost-effective for operation, and, you know, to try to make the most use out of that piece of equipment. So we're just trying to set a plan ahead so we know that come budget time, we make sure that we allocate the correct amount of funds to keep this plan going. If I didn't explain that correctly, please, okay, thank you.
Would I be correct in adding that you want to make sure that your fleet is not only functional and well-maintained, but also you would not maintain things that were obsolete, or, you know, you want to keep up with the requirements? So as needs change.
Correct.
You can be flexible to keep up with the changing needs.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve Resolution 2023-14? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion by the board? Call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution approved. Next up, Resolution 2023-15 IT Hardware/Software Replacement Policy Action.
Same concept, but with IT would be the best way to sum it up fast.
So this is a life cycle replacement for IT equipment based on recommendations, or, let's say, industry standards.
Correct.
For replacement of certain types of hardware.
It was created by industry standards, as well as advice from the State College Borough, who is our current IT service at the time.
Okay.
They also follow this plan. They just have never actually put a physical policy in motion, is what I was told.
This helps us also to define, when it comes to budgeting, to define our needs with regard to budget.
Yeah.
Both of them do, actually.
Mm-hmm.
Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
I move to approve the resolution.
Motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion by the board? Call for the question. All those in favor of Resolution 2023-15 signify by saying aye.
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 By the way, I want to just comment that you guys did a good job putting this all together, both of us.
Resolution approved. Municipal Lane Park Minor Improvement Plan.
Okay, so this is stemming from the April 13th meeting, and Brett has graciously put together this memo, and everybody should have been able to go through the options. And staff is recommending that we do options one through seven with a grand total of $24,219, which could be potentially funded from the deficit funds. And what this entails is just some minor upgrades just around the park facilities, replacing some older equipment and things that may not necessarily be in compliance anymore. So that is the first kind of section of that. And we also recommend option 9.1, which would be replacing the snack shack shed with a larger unit at a cost of approximately $16,000. And again, that could be pulled from the deficit funds. Is there anything you would like to add to that, Brett?
I would just add that if the all-staff recommendations are approved, that'll make our new deficit fund balance $126,781.
I have a question. We had also talked about the need to replace fencing on the ball field, the upper ball field. Is that another project, or?
That is another project. That does not include this. That actually should be completed tomorrow.
Good.
The crew should start tomorrow morning at 8:00.
And that's coming out of just our 2023 budget under park maintenance due to the savings of the lawnmower purchase.
Okay.
Your motion? You made a motion? Okay. Your motion, how about a second?
Second.
Moving second. Discussion by the board?
Yes. Does the, on option 9.1, the new building?
Yes.
That's going to allow us, I believe that you had said we would be able to use snack shack and also storage, and then be able to remove the two.
Yes.
Down by the.
The two existing ones out here to help.
For parking.
Just, yeah, so, and I misspoke when I talked about the parking lot last time. This really isn't, we're not expanding the parking lot of the footprint that we have. We're just removing excess items that are in the parking lot.
Right.
So yes, that would eliminate those two buildings and get it down into one unit that would be easier to maintain at that point.
Is that going to all be, like, is it going to already have the floor, or are we doing?
Yes.
So it's going to be wood?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's the option with that. I mean, there is another option that we could forego replacing any of those at this time and come back and discuss a more permanent structure, but that's going to require a lot more planning at that point. And of course, a lot of cost. But it's definitely an option just to wait at this time.
Any other discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. That's the way I took it.
Okay.
You made the motion.
Well, no, I actually said I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got this blower thing running over my head.
It would have, the way we at least requested it, it would have been options one through seven and 9.1.
Okay.
And what does that total?
I'm fine with that.
Do you have a total?
Of what it totals?
So it's 24,219 plus?
Forty thousand, 219, but on quick mental math.
Okay, thank you.
EMS Funding Formula Discussion and Possible Action. So I don't know who wants to spearhead this.
I'm who? I wrote the memo, if you want me to at least get the ball started. So a few board members kind of informally requested I create a chart to at least get discussion purposes started. So I started looking around the formulas that the Upper Body Eagle Cog had already passed around, referenced the Center Region Cogs formula, and deduced two of the three options of assessed value and population, and averaged them out. Amy does have the chart up. I'm not sure who all can see that at this moment. So the next step I took was, from the county, we obtained a chart of who, Port Matilda EMS, which municipalities they have primary coverage in. And it turns out that there are six. The five municipalities that make up the Upper Body Eagle Cog, but there is also a portion of Ferguson Township. So all I did to get the sample formula started for discussion was averaged out of all those municipalities, as well as I took 5% of Ferguson, assuming their primary coverage is 5%. I did email Centrice and asked her if they knew a specific number. She said she would get back to me. I've yet to hear anything, but at least it gets us somewhere. Warriors Mark is on there because I'd heard through hearsay they had a little tiny piece of primary coverage. Their secretary said she did not believe that was the case. She referenced the supervisors for Warriors Mark, and again, they did not respond, so I don't know if Dave.
They don't know. I talked to them.
Okay.
Well, nobody knows.
Did they not mention that they have, that Port Matilda does provide backup service?
Correct. They provide a service. They know that much, as well as they have donated in the past.
Right, and that's a significant amount of donation.
Correct. I don't think they are necessarily not on board, but they're also not 100% sure what to say at the moment as well.
Right.
I was asked by the secretary and one of the supervisors to sort of talk about it, but because we had not adopted anything, I told them that conceptually, we were going to, possibly going to adopt one of these outlines and then pass it around to the municipalities and see if we could get agreement amongst everybody. So I didn't want to lock in anything till we knew what we were going to do.
And that's where we're at at this moment. It's up for you five to discuss and.
I would like to add that I think that one of the waiting factors should also be, waiting factors should also be households. Center Regional Planning Agency has the demographic data on households in the Center Region, in Center County, in fact. So I would like to add that that ought to be a waiting factor in this. We've got all the other ones in here. We ought to have that one, too.
Different than population?
Because population, in my opinion, increases the number of potential responses. In other words, when you're budgeting, you're responding to individuals or population or people rather than locations for households. And I think, you know, typically, we respond to a household or an incident, a park, or a, we don't typically respond to each and every individual. That's, to me, it makes more sense to respond to residences or households or, what's the name of the drug rehab place in Taylor Township?
St. Joseph's.
St. Joseph's, for example. That's a location. And they use EMS services a lot. There's a high-use area. So it's, I think it's important to have all the waiting, potential waiting factors in. And that's all I'm saying. The density of, the number of potential responses is lower for residents.
Do we know what those?
Residents. Or parcels, for that matter, if you want to use parcels, but.
I don't know, do we know how that affects this? I don't, but you're still responding to individuals. I'm not sure for the, for this, how many things we want to put in the formula. It seems like population and assessed value covers.
But.
Covers it to the degree we need it to.
For example, we're using another waiting factor here, assessed value. In my mind, I don't know how that affects the potential number of responses.
No, we're factoring in the ability of people to pay, just like, and that's what Bellefonte does. They run all theirs off of millage.
I wouldn't be, I don't doubt that. I'm just saying that's one waiting factor. And I believe on the other end of that spectrum, there ought to be another waiting factor. So that's just my opinion.
Okay.
Personal opinion.
So Dave, then the way this would be used is we would, if we adopted this formula, at least as a starting point, then we would pass that information on to the other townships. And then once we've reviewed the budget from the EMS, and once they've come to us and say, this is what we need to be municipally funded, and we're in agreement with that, then this formula would get run against that amount, correct?
It would be the standard formula for all the municipalities, so that everybody could see exactly what they're going to have to pay.
Right, so if the deficit, if what they needed. Right, so if the deficit, if what they needed for the next year was fifty thousand dollars, then you can see across here what each would have to need to pay.
Obviously, like the borough, because their population and everything is much less than ours, they would pay much less.
Right.
One of the things that this does do, um, it does bring Ferguson Township into the fold.
Yes.
Which they have not really been part of this discussion, and I was unaware that that part of Ferguson was even covered by Port Matilda EMS. But this formula could also be a pattern for Port Matilda Fire Company as well. That we'd, and I'm not sure what their coverage looks like. I mean, right now, we're the only ones that really have sort of a contract with the fire company, I guess.
Right, and it could be something similar, but right now we're focused on the on the EMS because that's been a discussion now for quite a while.
We're looking for fair, but we're also looking for a way to help the fire company with their future planning so they can, you know, take a look at these numbers and say, this is about where we're gonna be or. And it helps the townships because then they know that they're paying an equitable amount, that the, say the borough is not being, carrying an unfair burden.
Right.
Just because you have, you know, like, in the borough, because the fire company resides within the borough, the fire company is responsible for workers comp for the firemen. Okay, now Half Moon Township and I think some of the other municipalities do help pay for that, but that's not how it was in the past. But it would be nice to have our standard formula so everybody's contributing in an equitable fashion towards the expenses that are involved with the fire company, that are involved with the ambulance company or any other thing that might crop up.
But but tonight, this formula is focused just on the EMS.
Right, this is just the NEMS formula. And right now, I think, you know, there's there's time enough for the other municipalities to take a look at it. You know, I didn't hear any definite no's from anybody, so I did I did talk to a couple of elected officials. But what I what I was thinking we would do is is adopt the plan or at least bring the plan, say, we're okay with it as far as Half Moon goes. And we'd like to send it out to the other municipalities, get them to adopt it as well. If we could get compliance on this thing, that would at least give us a mechanism to move forward for the twenty twenty-four budget. And for them as well.
I have a question, Brett. The average percent, what is that an average of?
The two percentages from above.
So the thirty-eight percent and the forty-four percent, average forty-one percent?
Correct.
Okay.
Are we looking for a motion on this?
I I'm personally looking for a motion, if the if the board wishes to entertain one, to to move it forward so we can present it to the other municipalities. And and have them hopefully either approve it or come back to us and say, hey, can we tweak this a little bit?
Okay.
I have still a problem averaging percentages like this. Percent of total is thirty-eight percent. The average of the app, the averages of the percentages is forty-one percent. I would prefer to start at thirty-eight, personally, that's my own opinion.
Thirty-eight percent is population by itself, that's what percentage of total is, it's the percentage of the total population.
Right.
So to be thirty-eight, you would you would honestly just remove assessed value and only go by population, if that's what you're looking for.
I'm not thrilled with it either, I definitely see Ron's point, you know, that I haven't had a lot of statistics, uh, you know, you can really manipulate things. But I I personally feel that this is, it's it's not great, but it's a good starting place, and I think it's somewhere where we can work with everybody. You know, I hate to present something that's all good for the, you know, myself and bad for everybody else, because that's not exactly.
But you made a good point, this is a negotiation. This is, this is something we're gonna have to present to four other municipalities, five other municipalities actually.
Yeah.
Maybe six.
Maybe six.
And we're going to have to compromise. So I would rather, I would rather start with the number that we think is reasonable. And start there rather than trying to increase the average before we even have a discussion.
I, yeah, well, I like to start simple.
Because I can tell you where the other side is.
Yep.
And it's not anywhere near this.
Yep, I know, but, you know, we're we're all in this together.
I think it's a great distribution, by the way. I think it's a great job to, at the end of the day, you five make the decision, I just give you the tools, so.
We appreciate that. I know it was not easy to get all that stuff together. So do I hear a motion to move this forward to the other municipalities and say that we are comfortable with it as it stands?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving second, any other discussion by the board? Call for the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. All right Brett, put that in a nice format and put a head and a tail on it and get it out to everybody involved. Uh, I think, you know, even like Warriors Mark, if you have information, you know, something from the ambulance company saying they have specific services, because I, because I know they don't know.
Well, Warriors Mark, I don't know either, because we got it from the county and with Warriors Mark being in Huntington.
And I know there's a thing with the blocks that go out for the ambulance for nine one one, so we just need to verify maybe with Huntington County if there's a void over there, if we're filling that void, so. All right, well, thanks, good work, not a problem.
Dave, can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead.
The Upper Bald Eagle Cog, Ferguson Township has never been represented or anything, are they, if they're covered, like, are they gonna be part of?
Well, they should be part of the discussion.
Yeah.
But the reason why they're not involved with it, because when the Upper Bald Eagle Valley Cog was formed, it was for the fire company.
Right, right, I understand that, but we're talking about the ambulance and.
Right.
And again, does the fire company, the fire company never covers in Ferguson Township?
Well, no, they they back up for Alpha and everybody else, but everybody needs to be involved with it that is in the service area.
Okay.
Now, they could tell us to get stuff, and we're still gonna have to support the ambulance company.
Well, yeah, I know, right, 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 I understand.
But I don't think they're gonna, well, I won't say, I don't know what they're gonna do, but I would hope that they would say, these people are out here helping us, so, you know, we could get some funding maybe for it.
But the EMS is independent, if the exception else getting their payment from the municipalities through the cog, they are independent of the cog, there's a.
I understand that, but again, if Port, if the fire company is is supplying backup service, just like Warriors Mark, I guess, um, they send a check for EMS because EM, Port Matilda EMS is a backup for Warriors Mark, at least for a portion of it. And again, I just think everybody should be involved in the discussions.
I agree with you, but I also know when this stuff is originally done, you know, that was before Dan Tanselbach had done a lot, you know, taken over the Southern County nine one one, all the blocks were set up. That does evolve from year to year.
I would think they would be part of the discussion, all the municipalities.
I would certainly invite them to to come and talk, and if they got concerns, to to get them out there, because we wouldn't lock this thing in, so we know what EMS is gonna be doing and the fire company's gonna be doing. We've we've gotta get this solved for good everybody.
Yeah, it's kinda like the equipment stuff and everything else, you need to plan for five years from now and ten years from now.
Yep.
And again, they have the same issues that we have with road, that equipment is gets, it only has a certain lifespan and then you have to replace it.
Exactly.
I know both with EMS and Port Matilda Fire Company, there are, there are regulations that even if something looks like it's perfectly fine, it it it's at that expiration date, it's out of there.
When the expiration date hits, then it has to go.
So you have to plan for that.
Yep, we're gonna try to get that underway, so, all right, thank you. Next up, Schlo Library Survey, discussion and possible action.
Um, again, I like the last one, some a different band of supervisors asked me to do a little bit of research. So in June of two thousand and three, a survey was conducted to get a different feel for different citizen interests. One of which was joining Schlo Library as one of the five regional municipalities to fund the library. Seven hundred and sixty-four responses came in to that particular survey, sixty-one percent of those responses were not interested in joining the Center Region municipalities in funding. However, in in August, the board of supervisors did indeed vote three to two to become a supporting member. Um, now, over those years, the funding formulas changed, obviously things have grown, a lot of things have definitely changed. So in twenty twenty-three, Half Moon, um, the budgeted amount for the library is fifty thousand, one hundred and twenty.
That was for Schlo, correct?
Correct, that was Schlo, yes. Um, so tonight's discussion is pretty much based on, being that it's twenty years later, um, is the board interested in a survey? If so, timing, logistics, iron out a bunch of details, really just kind of getting the groundwork going. Again, just to bring like the formula was, just to get a discussion going, where it goes is up to you five.
One of the things that that I'm concerned about, if, I think it's fine if if we want to do a survey to see where we are twenty years later. But is the timing of things right now too? We could go ahead and do the survey, but since we, at this point, have not set an amount to contribute to Schlo for twenty twenty-four. They're gonna start doing their budgetings, as as being a past member of finance and things, I know they're gonna be doing their budgeting starting probably now. But if we're gonna contribute to them in twenty twenty-four, we would need to let them know what that amount is, probably by the end of June. Or it's not gonna impact their budgeting process, and then there will be services reduced to us and to other folks based on that fifty thousand that we're no longer giving through contract. So I think between now and the end of June, maybe our next couple of meetings, we should discuss, are we gonna do a resolution or some form to determine how much we're going to give as a minimum for twenty twenty-four? So they know as they go into their budgeting what they're gonna be receiving from us. And then if we are running a survey, because I don't know that we could develop a good survey, get it out to everyone, get it back, get it looked at by the end of June timeframe. But if we still did that, it would still give us information, and then if we wanted to go back in to the to the regional library membership, we could still do that now or even later. But I think the important thing is, by the end of June, we should be able to tell them either we're rejoining or we're gonna give you this amount for twenty twenty-four.
All right.
And and the reason for that is, like I said, so it minimizes the impact on our citizens and on other citizens in the region.
What, uh, what is the approximate, uh, June deadline for their budgeting? Do you know, if that would be after our second meeting?
I can ask that.
They want to start budgeting in June, that's what I heard in the finance committee and executive committee.
Yeah, if we could determine by our earliest meeting in June, I'm sure that would be better than our last meeting in June.
Well, I I know, uh, Patty, you and I had talked about having some kind of discussion about, you know, where we're going and and sort of putting some outlines out there, a bit of a work session. You know, that's something we could have in a in a work session discussion, I don't know if June would be.
That was a strategy session for overall where we're going.
Yeah.
Being the library would be included in that, but you're talking like a three to five year plan type thing, right?
Yeah, I I don't know that that doing a survey is gonna be any different than it is. I did, in two thousand and eighteen, I sent my goddaughter around, I know it's not official, but actually the numbers were very similar to the twenty-three, twenty oh three, uh, numbers that came back. But I'm not really personally interested in having a contract with the library, I don't want to shut their money off entirely either. So, um, I would like to talk to the county library and see what their needs are as well, because I think we need to know, because they run the historical, uh, library as well.
Right, and we do donate to them, but they also receive funds through Schlo also.
Right. But I'd kind of like to see who needs what and and what the what the needs are before I commit to a whole bunch of money to go someplace. I don't, I don't want to just dump a blank slate of money over there on it, but that's my opinion. Anybody else want to add anything to that?
Well, it's not a blank slate, because we review their budget every year, so what it's going for, and we have input to what goes in and out of that budget, which, you know, now we won't have. But that was our choice, so.
Okay, so the most, the the item is Schlo Library Survey. Are we going to do anything with this or?
Well, I I think.
What's, what's the possible?
Patty's right, it's, you know, you're you're not gonna run a survey in the next thirty days and have information back, so.
I think the information can still be valuable, I'm just saying that we we have to, regardless of what we do with the survey, I think we have to determine what we're gonna give to the library sometime in June. And then that could change, you know, based on what, you know, how the survey results come back. It's just, are we interested in where the citizens are twenty years later now with what they're, with the library? And personally, I am, I'd like to see where, across the board, but then we have issues, so how do we get that out to everyone? I believe this last survey was actually mailed to everyone, you know, do we do electronics? So there's a lot of logistics around that, that it's not gonna happen in the timely manner for this year.
I would recommend if the board's up to it, that we have a work session next month. And sit down and and try to hammer out some details of what we might want to do or where the future is gonna go for this township. If if people are willing to do that, rather than having a regular meetings, we just say, okay, this.
And that would be along the lines of the strategy sessions we've had in the past year.
Like like we've done in the past, maybe a little more specific to the near future than than the.
Yeah, we could do a three year or three to five year.
Yeah. Because I know there's some big issues on on the ticket, as I'd said to Ron about, you know, Smith Road rehab, uh, you know, pedestrian access, you know, because we have a lot of population out there if we're gonna do something. You know, some of those things sort of have to be decided by the board, where we want to go.
Right, and I know it isn't, I know other municipalities and the library are trying to figure out how they're gonna fill this twenty, this fifty thousand dollar gap that we're leaving. And where that's gonna impact and how they're gonna handle it, so that's why I think it's important, if what we are gonna donate, we can give that to them in June.
Yep. Whatever we're gonna, whatever we're gonna donate, we need to sort of come up with some kind of a figure.
Right.
If we're gonna donate anything or if we're gonna donate everything, whatever the case may be, this board needs to sit down and discuss that as as to where they want to go. Does everybody be okay with that?
Sure.
Work session at our second meeting? It's fine for June, if you want to put that on the agenda.
Typically, we've had strategy, you mean during the meeting?
It would just be a meeting dedicated for that purpose, not just for the library, but for overall strategy. And and we may need to bring it, you know, continue it later or something, but it would be a place to start.
Yeah, typically, we've had work sessions outside of normal meeting times, because they've gone, you know, two or three hours.
Right.
And then we come back, and if we have it the last session of June, the last meeting date in June, that doesn't really give us, because typically in a work session, we're not doing motions and that kind of stuff, we're just setting up.
No, but by the July meeting, we could probably discuss that, I would think, and.
That's getting a little late, but.
Well, we've got our budget process too.
Well, do we have, well, it's not really, this is outside of our budget process in a way. Do we, um, we'll have to budget it in then when we do our budget process. But we have one more meeting in May, and we have the first meeting in June, so we have two other options, or we could have a meeting outside of those scheduled meetings.
I don't know if we have, Amy, do we have anything scheduled for the second meeting in May?
Not for the second meeting in May.
People want to start it in the second meeting in May or?
No.
Everybody wants to go, but Ron does not.
Not unless there's significant agenda items to to attend to.
Well, I'm just talking about a work session.
A work session is a meeting.
It is, but it would be not the usual stuff, there will be no minutes, there'd be no bills list.
Be a strategy session.
It'd be a strategy session. I would rather wait to June, that's how I feel about it, but.
We have them scheduled twice a month, every month, so we have one at the beginning of June.
Right, we're gonna hold a hearing at that date as well, because.
Well, what's the hearing for?
The ordinance.
Yeah, that's.
It might not take that long.
Fifteen minutes?
We we could do that, if people want to do that.
Let's say last one in May or the first one in June.
After the hearing.
Okay.
Chuck? Okay. First meeting in June?
We'll have to plan it, yeah. We'll give staff one more time that way.
We'll do the hearing.
That's fine, I can forewarn you, there are a couple other things on June eighth, Cindy Hahn of CNET's coming to give her, um, her media report, there are a couple other things on there, just.
But not big items?
Well, not to my knowledge, no, but there are gonna be a couple other items other than the Sua Jordan's public hearing, I just wanted to make you aware of that.
We'll do our best to crack them out, I don't think the public's gonna come in and complain about limiting developers' ability to develop. All right, June meeting. Anything else on that? Township reports. Want to just recognize and accept the reports?
I move that we accept the township reports as treasurer's report, secretary's report, public works department reports as linked to the agenda.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving second, any discussion by the board?
Is there anything that needs to be called out in any of those?
I don't think so.
Okay, okay, I looked at them. Okay, okay, I looked at them.
Well, somebody else saw something that they're concerned about. All right, call for the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Approved. Authority Board and Committee Reports. Move to accept those, the Executive Finance, Human Services, Facilities, Land Use, Schlo Library Trustees, CNET Board of Directors, Upper Half Moon, Bald Eagle Council Governments, and the Open Space Preservation Board.
I move to approve the Authority Board and Committee Reports as linked to the agenda.
We'll hear a second.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion by the board? Call for the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Approved, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion.
Aye.
Aye.
Sharon Ravansik.
Cecil Houseknecht.
Hi, Cecil's going to speak first.
Yeah, so we are here tonight to ask for the Board of Supervisors' approval of May 2023 for Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, for the resolution for Half Moon Township. The reason that we're asking for this, asking for this and other townships have approved this resolution is for the fact that for Asian Americans within Half Moon Township and within surrounding communities, a resolution like this is a reminder to people, and it's an important message, that they feel seen and that they feel that they belong in this community. I think for all of us in the community, we recognize that we all come from different backgrounds, whether it's our religion, our race, or wherever we're coming from, our family background. When we have people that historically have maybe not always felt that they belong in spaces, maybe they've never felt that they feel included in spaces, like they feel that they have a seat at the table. I know sometimes for a resolution, it might seem that it's just a piece of paper, and it doesn't make big of a difference. But for people, when they see something like this, it's a reminder to them that they are included here. They belong in Half Moon Township, they belong in these communities. And this is why we are asking for the approval of this resolution in Half Moon Township for May 2023.
I would just like to say I find Cecil very eloquent, I guess I don't have much to add to that, just except that I live in Half Moon Township, I've raised three children in Half Moon Township. And just like everyone here, my story isn't unique, it's not, it's just a minuscule part of what makes this month special. But like everybody else, and like Cecil said, I'm very proud of my heritage. I'm proud that my grandfather came to Hawaii when it was still a territory from Japan. He had nothing, he was a farmer, he, like everybody else here, a lot of people in Half Moon. He bought a suit, he cobbled the money together for a suit, took its picture, changed his name to Harding, who was the president from Kore Masa, and he raised a family, and two of his sons served in the Korean War, and to be able to go through college. And so we would just ask that to be seen and heard is just so important. And like Cecil said, to feel like we have a seat at the table and to be recognized, we would ask that you accept and approve this resolution.
Generally, we don't do resolutions based on race, religion, theory, whatever it is that's out there. And I, I don't really want to start. That's how I feel about it, not that, you are definitely seen, because you're definitely at the meetings, and we do enjoy hearing from you. But I, I personally am not going to vote to recognize any particular group, religion, sub-religion, subgroup, you know, from whatever to whatever. I appreciate everybody that's here, and if we don't all pull together, the hard work doesn't get done, and I understand that.
Okay.
And I know your family's story is, is probably unique to your family for the particular individuals that are there, but it is a very similar story amongst all the different groups that came here, except for the people that were here originally when the Europeans showed up and probably ruined everything to begin with. So I don't know how the rest of the board feels, so.
Well, I believe that, I think this was offered before, to have recognition of this, this Asian American, is it month, right?
It was, it started out as a week, and then it was extended to a month.
And was it not offered to be a recognition in the consent agenda, like we recognize other, other groups?
I believe during the pandemic, before you were a supervisor, it was passed three to two. And then the Hispanic Heritage Month was denied, that was after the pandemic. And I'm not sure, I was here for that one, but I'm not sure exactly what, the one was before, during the pandemic, because I was at home.
There was one just recently, a few months ago now.
That was the Hispanic.
It was last year, it was the Hispanic word. And the board did not support that.
I'm okay with a recognition on the consent agenda, I'm not okay with using resolutions in this manner.
We discussed about a Half Moon Township heritage to include everybody. I don't know where that has ever gone.
Well, I feel, honestly, I feel like it's, like if other, if people want to do it, everybody can get in to do it. You know, it's not.
One point I'd like to add is that I think sometimes when we have this conversation of resolutions, the idea that people feel that it is a way to divide us, that we're focusing on one particular group and we're excluding others. But the point of this, this is coming from me, I'm, I'm not in, I'm not Asian American, I'm someone who advocates for this community. The reason that we have these resolutions is so that it gives us a chance to celebrate the diversity of our communities. We're all coming from different backgrounds, and for many communities, like Asian Americans, immigrants, Latinx communities, Black community, they all historically have faced hardship, have faced exclusion in their communities. And so even, like I said, sometimes resolutions seem maybe not as significant, it's just a piece of paper. But at the end of the day, it is showing people in your community, the people that are living here, that have generations here, have been immigrants here, that they belong here, and that we celebrate them and we appreciate what they bring to this community. And so in a way, this is not dividing our community, it's bringing us together and recognizing that we all come from different places.
Well, I believe that's a matter of opinion, and I believe when, when, if we adopt that, we are denying those people that disagree with that opinion. So, you know, I have my own heritage, and my, my grandparents came from Italy. And they faced, they faced oppression and discrimination, like, yeah, I think many people, other people just claim that they did. I know what they went through, I know my father went through, okay, but they came here to be Americans. They left, they left the caste system, the class system of Europe behind. They came to America to be Americans. I am an American. I have Italian, German, Welsh, and Irish blood in me, but I am an American. What came in the past is in the past. I'm proud to be an American, and that's all I want to be, and I believe we are a melting pot. I believe those, that, that is the fundamental tenets of America. And, and I do not think it's appropriate to use a resolution in this manner.
I think, I thank you for sharing your experience, and I, and I don't discredit the idea of you facing your hardship, your family facing hardship. I, my ancestors, my, my family came from Europe as well, that's part of who I am, part of my identity. But I also recognize for a lot of my Asian American peers, my friends, that I went to school with in the area, that I work with, they have faced different challenges, different exclusion and different hardships, unique to their identity, how they are perceived as Asian. And many times, they are perceived as other, they're never perceived as an American. Like we all want to be feeling, that if we are showing this place is our home, we want to be viewed as American. So the Asian experience is an American experience, and we want to ensure that everyone feels included and accepted in these spaces. And so I'm not discrediting other people's experiences, even someone like me who is white, my ancestors are from Europe. I recognize that my family went through hardships. My family, my, my dad, my parents went through a lot of hardships to get where they are today. And I respect that and I appreciate that, but I have other people in my life, Asian American communities and other minority communities that face different challenges, and we need, we're still not at that point where they feel accepted and included in spaces. And so giving other communities a little more attention, a little more recognition, is not excluding and leaving others behind. It's making sure that we aren't leaving others behind as well.
Anybody else got anything to add on the board?
Yeah, I appreciate coming tonight, and I believe that is, that recognizing this and pointing out that this is this month is very important and that we all pay attention to the contributions and things, but I appreciate that, so thank you.
Thanks for coming in. All right, call for a adjournment.
Adjourn. I would just like to point out that another issue for diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging is having the reports printed out for people, because I've had many citizens ask me, I don't have a computer, my computer isn't working, what was the report?
I thought I was the only one that didn't have a computer.
Well, how do, you know, I mean, we need to have those, and they need to be accessible to citizens. And that is a, you know, that's meeting the needs of your citizens, having the reports. If you're not going to go over them in meetings, which apparently you're not, then I think we need to have, make sure, are they posted, I mean, posting them on the website, I don't know if they are, but.
I believe you can click on them and they come right up.
If you have a computer, but how is somebody going to find out what the report is if they don't have access to a computer? You know, they would have to come here and pick up a hard copy, but we don't have hard copies. And I used to drive, there was a woman who lived at the end of this road who couldn't walk, and I used to pick her up and bring, take her to her errands and things. How is a citizen like that going to be informed? And I'm just saying, for the good of the community, again, making sure everybody has easy access to these reports is really imperative.
Well, we'll see if we can try to get copies out for the next meeting.
Can they be also available at the township office, well, the township office, sorry, I'm still used to it being.
I was going to say.
Yeah, if you come down and you need a copy or something.
Reports are always in what the township office, what they're asking.
You're always welcome to come down and get copies of stuff, that, you know, you know, as long as you don't want 500 copies or something, obviously, you'd have to.
I'm just trying to figure out how, like how the ladies I drive around are going to get, you know, get the information.
Can you ask a question?
Uh huh.
Was this not an issue before, because they could be accessible on CNET, because we verbally said.
We verbally said it.
What those were, and they could go back and look at this. So at the end, so I like the idea of having these reports, because it makes you think about it ahead of time, and it keeps them concise, and then people can link on them, and when we have them for reference. But are we saying in addition, and I, sometimes we do do this at COG too, we go down and we just, it makes it easier and quicker that we can just still go through and highlight them. I know we've been trying to shorten the length of the meeting, and I think that's one of the reasons we've tried to streamline our format on our new agenda. But if in lieu of trying to print out a lot of reports that may or may not get picked up or have people physically come in, if we just gave summaries or highlights of these, would that?
I think that would help people a lot.
I've got a question about that. If, how does, how does CNET get, what, what form of report? You're talking about they record the physical reports that we make in the public meetings?
Yes, the verbal reports.
The verbal reports.
But we're not giving those anymore, and it seems to me, I'm sorry, but it seems to me that we're making these meetings shorter, which I completely understand, you guys have put in a lot of time, but we're also possibly going down to one meeting a month? Kind of unofficially, unofficially?
Where possible, I think, in my opinion.
Yeah, so that's, that's problematic for people, you know, I just, I worry about people who ask me, well, what happened at the township meeting, and.
We can bring the reports here.
Well, no, saying it, summarizing it verbally, because then somebody who's watching it on, on CNET or YouTube gets the gist. It's, you know, just a quick, this is what.
Let me talk to staff for the next meeting, maybe I could just do a summary on each thing for the public. And then I guess if they have questions, they can click on the button, or they could borrow your computer or something.
Well, I mean, I, today I was standing on Loveville Road, and one of my neighbors asked me, I didn't have my computer on me, I didn't have my cellphone on me, and it was just sort of like, I don't know how to give you this information.
Right, but we can't be all things to all people all the time.
No.
Again, I'll, I'll repeat what I said earlier, the reports are available through the office for the asking. I mean, a person can come here and actually get the reports.
It's a matter of public record.
Or we can make the reports available at the meeting.
Right, if you're in a wheelchair, coming here is difficult.
Okay.
And that's, I mean, we do have citizens, our population in Half Moon Township is aging. And for a lot of people, I mean, it's difficult, so I'm just trying to make sure that it's as easy as possible.
I understand what you're saying, but I don't know any other way to get them that information.
Just summarize it in the meeting, a quick two-sentence summary, this is what happened.
Well, that's what I just mentioned, I would try to do that for the next meeting, just.
Like Karen has a report there, and she posted it, but it would be good for her to just do a summary.
I mean, if.
Sentence or two.
We can do a two-sentence summary. I mean, it's not going to be, the quality of that kind of reporting isn't going to be as good as the quality of the reports that we're doing. I'm actually take time to sit down and write a report for every committee I'm on. A detailed report that goes to Amy, who links it to the agenda.
I, I get that, and I really appreciate it, but if you don't have a computer, so if, for instance, my neighbor who's in a wheelchair heard your two-sentence summary, and she said, oh, I want to find out more about that, then, you know, that could, but right now, she doesn't know, you know, that's all I'm trying to figure out.
All right.
Is how do we get the information out there?
We'll take it into consideration, see what we can do.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I have a motion on the table, Mrs. Kirman.
We have a motion to adjourn, do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thanks for coming.